You know, but everybody that's tuning in, you know, uh, our Black Slate members, people that just tuned in from outside, we're gonna have a good conversation. With one of our candidates right here, Mr. Jerry Monroe out here running for school board. Uh, we wanna make sure that we just have those conversations, talking to the people and from the people. Be able to have these conversations back and forth and ask these questions. So, you know, we just gonna have it real like here. Uh, we appreciate everybody tuning in. Um, Mr. Monroe for being here to answer some of these questions and telling us all the stuff he do for the community. Um, so we just wanna make sure we make this happen. Appreciate it, brother. So, you know, as we start, go ahead and tell everybody who you are.
I mean, if, if the people don't know who I am by now, you ain't been keeping up with me, man. I, I think, uh, I think you need to know who I am. I'm, I'm Gary Monroe. I'm a, I'm a proud graduate of Jackie H Senior High School, class eight six. Uh, I can say now, four years later, that I am a proud graduate of Central Texas College. I got my associate's degree in criminal justice and now I'm a student at Lamar University. Uh, I'm gonna finish up my bachelor's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna finish up my masters and I'm gonna go to law school and I wanna open a law firm. Basically called the Hood Law Firm. One of our biggest problems in our community is, is good legal representation. At, at, at a cost of what it normally costs. So, I wanna open up a law firm to be able to help my people in the community. Have a high quality lawyer, but not pay a whole bunch of money. Uh, outside of that, I mean, some people call me an activist. I call myself an advocate. I get to travel all over the country and, and help people. And that's, that's a beautiful thing, whether it's education, whether it's politics, whether it's. Community organizing. I get to go everywhere, man, and, and meet, you know, some fantastic, dynamic people. It's not about race with me, it's just about helping people. So, with that being said, it's not too much to me on my open book. Uh, I, I speak my mind. I speak my mind. I refuse to remain silent as an African American. In the United States of America, in two thousand twenty-one, I'm not doing it anymore. I mean, it's just time to step up to the plate. And those that get mad for me speaking the truth, you'll figure it out. Get your pet, get your dog or something.
Well, I'll say this, you know, most of the people I feel like there's, even there's watching, don't even really know. They, they wanna get in fight. One thing I realize, we go to a lot of these different, uh, places and most black people never even been a part of a black organization. You know what I'm saying? Outside of being green, outside of the church. So, but, so they don't really know what these issues are. I mean, I just want you to take some time and just say, just real quick, give us two or three issues. That you say are some of the issues that you feel like the people that, school board, current school board is not doing, that you feel like people should be paying attention. Just two or three. You know, I know you go on.
I can actually give you four hundred off the top of my head. But, you know, I, I will say that we don't value or respect our teachers enough. And that's shown through the fact that we won't pay them exactly what they should be making. I believe that a first year teacher, a first year teacher straight out of college should make no less than sixty-five thousand dollars a year. And in the city of Houston, in the Houston Independent School District, tell me why that's not possible? If you go down the street, I tend to Barber's Hill, right there in Baytown. Those teachers start off in that small community at sixty-five thousand dollars a year, first year teachers. Why are my teachers being disrespected in this manner? But yet, at the same time, you have district, district officials, paraprof, paraprofessionals that make a hundred, hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. It's not right. Your teachers are your frontline workers. To the foundation of our nation, which is educating our children. Why we not paying them? Bottom line. The, the, the next thing in the Houston Independent School District is the disrespect that has gone on with the special ed department. For, for the last twenty years. Now, I sat on the special ed ad hoc committee for HISD. I know the recommendations that we came up with. And the biggest question that I was asked is why would they never implement it? Why would they never implement it? I looked at the money that has mysteriously disappeared. From the dyslexia program in that special ed department, two million dollars just mysteriously disappears. And, and our dyslexic kids not getting their help that they need.
Right. Let me ask you a question in there. I guess when we talk about special ed and you talk about digging deep out, one thing I feel like that's an issue is. It's a very big incentive for these schools to ramp it up. But what is their incentive to ramp it down or get kids off of this? Other than the decrease of funds that the school get? Because I feel like if that's a negative incentive, you know what I'm saying? If we get more kids off of it, then we lose funds. We get more kids on it, we get more money. So, what is that incentive in this program? I feel like it's a little flawed because how can we get that turned around? If they feel like all we're doing, we're doing a good job by getting kids off of it, but in turn, we're losing money.
Well, first of all, you, you have to really create a system. That can make sure that these kids have to actually be labeled specially. And a lot of our kids have not been getting tested. They have refused to test these babies and get them the help that they need. Now, the good thing about me is I get to go into the schools. I get to sit down with the principals. I get to talk to people behind the scenes. That are pleading and begging to get the help that these children need, to, to, to be able to get them where they need to be. So, now, the numbers don't add up to me. When I went to school, special ed was maybe eight or nine children. That came to school early, left early, they ate lunch early. You could identify the special ed children. Now, you have a population in schools where special ed, where your whole school populations is like a thousand kids. Five hundred of those children are labeled special needs kids. So, they're making tons of money on special ed kids. But the money is not going into the schools. The principals have told me that they're not getting the financial help that they need. And when they scream for the financial help, the principal themselves become targets.
So, where is the money in your opinion? Where is it going? Is it going to officials that's outside of the school? Or is it going to certain principals and people that's within certain school?
You, you, we live in a society in the Houston Independent School District where we are in a decentralized school district. I mean, they can do whatever they want with their money. Now, what you have, if you have a principal that doesn't know how to balance the budget of a school. And they have a two million dollar budget. And then you have X amount of dollars that should be earmarked for special ed. They can spend the money on whatever they want. They don't have to answer to anybody. So, a lot of these people at the school level, it's not that they're misappropriating the money. They're spending it on stuff that they actually don't need. You need the supplies in the classroom. You may, you may say, I'm gonna put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards general supplies, that's toilet paper, same hand sanitizer. Okay, but you only had enough to put there and to put into special ed. So, what would you do? Why would you buy a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of toilet paper? Now, as smart as these people are, some of them don't know how to balance a checkbook. That is your house. In my home, I have to make sure that I pay the life bill first. That I pay the rent. You see what I'm saying? I'm, I'm not worried about the car number until I get the basics paid for. So, if you know that you need to take care of, of special ed, you take care of special ed. At the district level, bottom line, they're misappropriating the money.
So, basically, you're saying we need, it need to be better restrictions on where the money needs to be allocated. Not only coming from the head, but all the way down to each school and how it need to be budgeted. They don't, they don't need to have too much free rein.
Exactly. On cer, on certain things, they should have free rein. But that is one of the reasons. That the Texas Education Agency has sent in two conservatives to monitor special ed. Because we are not doing what we're supposed to be doing.
For sure. So, what are, are there any penalties for schools that are found out to be misappropriating these funds? If there have been any investigations in that matter at all?
Well, I, I, I'm gonna tell you like this. How can you penalize somebody for misappropriating money when you ain't sending them enough to misappropriate? The state of Texas is not funding these schools properly. That is putting these people in situations. Where they have to rob from Peter to take care of Paul. And then when they start doing it and nobody's monitoring. Okay, well, I'm gonna rob from Peter to take care of Paul, but at the same time, let me slip a little something in my pocket. You see what I'm saying? So, it, it's, the Texas Education Agency could do a better job. But at the same time, if a school fails, whether it's special ed or regular students, that's right up the alley. Because they actually, they wanna close the schools. And that's, that's all it boils down to.
Sure. So, I mean, I just think in my opinion, it is, I feel like they're putting us in situations to fail. And then penalizing us for failing.
They create the problem.
For sure.
And then they want you to navigate the problem. When you can't navigate the problem, then they wanna penalize you and come in and possibly take over your school district.
So, I guess we talked a lot about the, a lot of the issues, just now, just some quick points. So, you say you wanna get elected. We know you ran before. Uh, you didn't get the result that you were looking for. This time, we're looking for something different. So, what do you say is, if you may get that seat, what is something that you feel like you really can effectively do? Knowing that you're the only person that's radically thinking in your sphere of what needs to be done. How do you get that done? How do you rally the people around you or the people of the community to making sure that that stuff gets done?
When, when it comes to people making irrational decisions, when, when you're sitting on boards and you're making irrational decisions. Sometimes you need that one person in the room that they gonna look over at when they start thinking they finna pull something slip. Nah, I ain't gonna even do this with him in here. Now, I, I bring an element to the Houston Independent School District Board of Trustees. One, there needs to be a male presence on the board. There is no male presence on the board and we can see. No disrespect to my sisters, black, white, Latino that sit on the board. No disrespect. But y'all are so chaotic that it's like, you know, from a black perspective. Remember Pittypat game back in the day? Remember we used to play Pittypat? You got too many women at the card table right now. And all they doing is arguing every first and second Thursday of the month. They're not accomplishing the goal. You need a male presence in the room. Let's get that straight. Secondly. I've mastered education. I know every rule, every policy, everything that needs to be done. I think the first order of business to be a good trustee is understand that you only have three job functions. So, if you ask me a question sitting here today, and it's not within the scope of what I would do, I'm not gonna answer that question. It may sound good if I did answer it and make, and fluff everything up, but if I realistically as a trustee can't touch that. Then there's no reason for me to answer that question. So, you have to know that you only have three job functions. That's it. One of the biggest job functions, and we failed at it for the last three years, a trustee is supposed to pick a superintendent. What we waiting on? How hard is it to pick a good superintendent? Let's look back at the last five that we had. How many teachers got fired with, with those superintendents? How many, you know, cafeteria workers, I mean, custodians lost their jobs? How many African American schools closed with the last five superintendents? Now, look at the one that we have now. Ain't no black schools closed. Black kids are actually getting a fast shot at education as well as every child in the Houston Independent School District. So, if you can't even pick a trustee, then you can't function or do your job duties as a trustee. We can't go into another legislative season with an interim trustee. Who's supposed to go battle for us in Austin? When the people in Austin are looking at us like, they don't know what the hell they doing down in Houston.
I'm gonna put you in the high seat right.
Come on, I'm ready.
I'm gonna say this, I done heard you say a couple times, you know, like, look, you only supposed to have these amount of meetings. I ain't going to all these meetings, they supposed to have this. How do you intend to keep these people in check if you ain't gonna go to all the meetings? Cause I'm gonna tell you right now, I want you to vote, but I wanna see you at every damn meeting that they go to. Matter of fact, if you ain't got to send a proxy if you can.
Okay, well, here's the game. First of all, you're only supposed to attend four meetings a month as a trustee of the Houston Independent School District. As a trustee in the state of Texas, by law, four meetings. When I sat on the ad hoc committee, we were supposed to have eight to ten meetings. We ended up with eighteen to twenty meetings. In those meetings, what are we here for? What are we doing? We're wasting time. You see what I'm saying? No, I will be at every meeting that I need to be at. There's no question. Think about it. I've not missed a board meeting in almost nine years. Minus the time that they kicked me out, I had to sue them to get back here. But, at the same time, a lot of times, they're just meeting to meet. I'm not that guy. I don't like to just meet to meet. I wanna meet to accomplish a goal. So, I'm, I'm not, I'm, I don't have time to waste. I would rather be at a community meeting. Talking about how to fix our schools than sitting in a meeting that we don't need to have for HISD. That's wasting time. That, that's my thing. I mean, four meetings a month by law.
Nah, I agree. We just know these people don't play fair. They don't play by the rules. So, sometime we could just gotta make sure that we gonna be there, be present at all times because, you know, we don't trust them. I don't trust nobody as far as I can go.
Well, first of all, I think that somebody on the board of trustees needs to go in. And, you know, we have a new board president. Patricia Allen got voted in the other night. Congrats to Patricia Allen. But I think that board meetings, they actually need to change. The time needs to change. African American parents on an average work one to two jobs. How can you schedule a board meeting? At five P M. in the east, in the city of Houston, to battle traffic? To have the right amount of representation? No, that needs to change. And if you have a special meeting, why would you have it at seven o'clock in the morning? That makes no sense. You do that on purpose to keep people out of the building. You know that as an African American parent, I'm working two jobs. I got kids, they at home. I can't make that meeting. And that's when the slick stuff starts to, starts to happen. When you get the stuff slide, slid in on the agendas that you never had no clue that was coming. So, no, that, that would be something I would fight for to change the time of the meetings, to make it accommodating for everybody to be able to show up.
Yes, I'm glad you said that. Cause one of the things, you know, everybody that's watching, go check out, everybody in the audience, ourblackslate.com. And one of the things that we're promoting, not just for candidates that we're running, but candidates that we want to endorse is being proactive. One thing I can say, I've been in this community, these communities from out here Third Ward to Acres Home for years. And I can't name not one politician that has thrown a community meeting. Have they shown up to other meetings? Yeah. But nobody has thrown their own meeting or had a meeting specifically on the things that they're going through. Their hand is coming out of the pipe so we can be proactive instead of reactive. So, one thing that we want politicians that we are supporting. To commit to is either monthly, quarterly, bi-monthly, something meetings. That way, we can be proactive in the things that we can support you on. You know, the things at your hand. So, we don't have to worry about stuff and it's already coming before we start to react. So, you know, could that be something that you commit to that we making sure that we stay proactive on things like that?
It, it's not committing to it, it's mandatory. Because what I would do, the agenda comes out at a certain time for a school board meeting. I would schedule every single month, a community meeting and go over the full agenda with the community. Now, watch this, you gonna love this. In that meeting, everything that's, we can discuss that, that's not in closed session on that agenda. You get to tell me how to go into the boardroom and vote. No, 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 no. I represent you. So, what we gonna do if it takes us two, three hours? We gonna go over every single agenda item. We gonna make sure you understand what this affects. How does this work? I'm gonna give you my opinion. This is good, this is bad. As a collective community group, on, on agenda item one A, Mr. Monroe, you need to vote yes. Okay, yes, ma'am. And when I go in, to, to the boardroom, you gonna see me vote exactly the way that you told, because I'm your employer. That's, that's mandatory. That's something I gotta do.
Okay, okay. Nah, I like that. I mean, I feel like that there's, there's something that's needed. In the past, we haven't had that chance to really be, uh, proactive. Again, we spoke about, uh.
You give the community a voice when you do that. Now, they are a part of the decision-making process, which they should be.
Sure. So, let's go back to, uh, real quickly on things that you feel like you can get done. And some of the uphill process in order that you feel like that would, that would need to happen, not only from you. But, uh, cries and, and shouts and demands from the community, what, what does that look like for you?
Let's talk about the elephant in the room, equity. We hear equity thrown around the Houston Independent School District like a frisbee. How do you create equity? It's not hard. The question is, is do you really want equity? One of the best ways to create equity in the Houston Independent School District is reach all them district lines. Put those kids where they supposed to be going. There's no way you can justify to me, you're familiar with Third Ward, Texas. Why the zone for Lamar High School sits right down Dollar Street in Third Ward, Texas?
I was on to Lamar and Lanier now.
They do that because they want to steal the children from one zone to send them to another zone. Let's go back seventeen years and look at the enrollment of Lamar High School. They were inches away from being closed down for low enrollment. So, what they did is they stretched their zone into Third Ward to steal Yates' kids. So, they're now zoned to Lamar. When you do that, you put kids in the seats, which generate more money for the schools. You see what I'm saying? So, that's the first thing you need to do, is you need to create, create equity by re-drawing the district lines. And that's the elephant in the room that nobody wants to talk about. Because if you do that, then Phyllis Wheatley gonna get their kids back. Yates gonna get their kids back. Sterling gonna get their kids back. Worthing gonna get their kids back. Madison gonna get their kids back. So, the schools that are low performing, all of a sudden, them high performing kids get to come home now. That is how you create equity. Now, if you really wanna create equity, let's stop lying to the general public. The pandemic taught us something. If, even as bad as it's been, it's taught us that some people just ain't doing what they supposed to do. What I mean by that, and I got teachers in here sitting with me. How can you justify that you rolled out? The laptop program where kids are supposed to have digital learning through a laptop. Five, six years ago, but the pandemic hits and the first thing you scream, we don't have enough laptops in the black schools. You create equity by giving everybody the same things. Make sure that every school has what they need. Why is that so hard? Because now the haves don't have to give to the have-nots. And the way you save money, I'm not trying to develop another system to create more money. If you got four hundred laptops and you only need two, I tell you what, you gonna transfer those two hun, you gonna transfer two hundred of those over to this school. We just gonna shuffle some stuff around. Now, what happens when you start talking in that manner? You're gonna make some folks mad on the other side of town. Because they feel like you're taking something from their kids. Okay, if that's the case, then I tell you what you could do. You took our vocational programs, you gave it to them. So, why don't you take it back? Cause they're not using them and give them back to us. You built all these new schools with all this extra space in them. And if you go to the, the schools that they rebuilt. There is tons of room in those schools to turn those classrooms into printing shops, to turn them into cosmetology. You see what I'm saying? Why won't you do this for us? You fight with everything in your power and you stand firm, and this is what we need to do and it needs to get done.
So, you said something interesting about the redistricting, and I feel like a lot of people are not, especially all this may not be familiar. What does that, what does that process look like for you as far as getting it done? And redistricting, how is it, any type of processes or anything to your information? That people can look up that you feel like that would be more pertinent? Is there anything that you can, resources you can give them about looking up for is redistricting and thing like that?
I think you have to make people explain themselves. And what I mean by that, those that sit in the districts. Where they have everything that they need. Explain to me why we can't put the zone back where it was. Explain to me why you don't want a child to, to not go to a school that's two blocks from his house. Explain to me why you don't wanna put these, I wanna have that conversation with Elizabeth Santos. I wanna have it with Holly Villaseca. I wanna have it with Ann Sunk. No screaming, no hollering. Explain to me how it makes sense. Now, when you put a person in that position, I'm gonna use Ann as an example, you can have a Harvard degree, but that's a hard conversation to have with me. Explain to me why it can't be done. Because if you don't wanna do it. Then you're really not in the business of educating all children, knowing that some of these kids don't have what they need in these schools.
Do you know if they ever gave a reason for discharging the lines the way they did, or if it was just done because, you know?
I mean, it was common sense why they did it.
I know why they did it, but I'm saying, what, what reason did they justify? Do, do you know of?
They didn't give a reason, they just did it. They just did it. They, when you put people in positions of power. And they sit in these seats as politicians or superintendents or mayors or whoever, they get to the point where I don't have to answer you. They do what they want and it's their justification. But the people that are making these decisions, they've never worked in these schools. They don't live in these communities. They don't understand the impact of having poor educational situations in your community. They don't understand that if the educational component is broke, that your crime rate gonna go up. They don't live in the box that we live in. So, it's no way for them to ever understand and they don't, they feel they don't have to justify it. I mean, the, the new president-elect, Joe Biden, God bless him. You said if they deliver charging, you gonna give us two thousand dollars? He, all of a sudden, now it done went down to fourteen hundred. He don't have to explain himself. And he hasn't. That's a prime example. They don't feel like they have to explain themselves.
So, you spoke about earlier about teachers and, and valuing our teachers. With the, the charter schools and their lack of needing, um, or having certified teachers and just paying uncertified teachers less. Do you think it's a threat to our certified teachers?
I think it's a threat to the certified teacher, it is a threat to the student. If you're an uncertified teacher, you can be the janitor in a charter school and teach math. That don't mean they gonna learn something. You, you, look, charter schools serve their purpose. But I'm, I'm amazed at how you can put a child at a charter school and they perform at this level. But when they were in the school across the street, uh, what's the school over there? Woodson? Woodson is on one side of the street and Kip is on the other side. The kid sitting in Woodson is performing at this level. Oh, I'm gonna take him out and I'm gonna put him over in Kip. So, he goes from here to here. Why? The charter school got more stuff. But the crazy part is, my tax money is paying for the charter school as well as the public school. So, why can't my money go where it needs to go to take care of our teachers and our kids? You, I love teachers and I'm gonna be honest with you, man. Uh, I was married seven, seventeen years, I got divorced. I messed that up. I messed that up. Then I got, then I got married again. But the first dance when you get married is with your wife at the reception, am I right? Both of us were Yates graduates. And we chose to dance with our school counselor. That was there when we were at school. I love teachers. I love my principal, God bless him until this day, Osby Mitchell. When you find out that teachers don't have to care for your child, and yet they do, you respect them. When you find out that these teachers, even though their salary, they work eighteen to nineteen hours a day, you respect them. You should pay them what they're worth. The state of Texas has something in place. With, with unionized workers and teachers and different things, where these teachers can't strike. What would the school system be like if they could? If they could walk out of those buildings for the mistreatment that they've incurred, and I've represented tons of teachers in grievances. And I've never lost. What would the system be like? What would it be like? That, you know, until this day, people like, well, you advocate for African American teachers. I do, I love all teachers. The best teacher I ever had was a white guy named James Claypool that taught me eleven grade English. A white teacher. So, don't, don't give me that black or white. Don't give me that Latino. Treat them with the respect that they deserve. And in this world, when it come to your money. If you paying me what I'm worth, then I ain't gonna leave to go to the charter school. I ain't gonna leave to go to the other school district. Look at the exodus that has happened with teachers in the Houston Independent School District in the last four years.
And it's funny, but why I tell you the next, uh, the next question is funny, cause I say this, it's, it's black power, it says, we are. You know, the first teacher that got me to read a book was a white teacher named Mr. Wizzy at Ryan Middle School. And I'm like, I, I would never forget. That was the first book I read and then I probably didn't finish another one till after college. So, but, and it, but I just felt like that that was funny that, you know, we don't see color in, in that realm of it. But sometime it takes somebody outside of to get you to do something that you never done before.
We, we don't see color in that aspect. But every year, the Houston Independent School District has, has to do a reduction in fourth, in force. It's called a riff, where they have to get rid of X amount of teachers. So, if it's not about color. Can somebody explain to me why the trustees continue to sign off on a gap of about thirty-seven percent more African American teachers? Being riffed than any other ethnicity? And I'm talking about high quality African-American teachers that are be, being pushed out of the school system.
Is this from every district or?
I'm, I'm, I'm strictly focusing on H I S D, but if we go to Fort Bend, you'll see the same trend. If you go to Katy, you gonna see the same trend. The African-American teachers are the ones that get the riffs. They're the ones that get the low scores. For what reason? All because you have to. You, you, when your numbers don't add up right and you don't know how to spend the money as a district, you're gonna deal with that reduction in force every year. But me being a trustee, imagine, can I see your laptop? This is, this is the paperwork coming across the desk to get rid of Allen Provost with a riff. Thirty years. No bad evaluations. I ain't signing that. You won't get my vote on it. Why would I wanna lose a teacher? All of a sudden you tell me after thirty years he can't teach. What he worked at for thirty years and can't do a good job? It's not possible. So it's not about color. But in a sense, it is about color.
I would ask you this, so is it with that speaking and we knowing that teachers not being able to strike and stuff like that? And this is my dream, and I spoke to a lot of teachers about it. Is it some type of, you know, they have these things? At the beginning of each year, they go to these big conferences where they have the, the teachers, you know, all there from the, all the district, you know, uh, that whole district. But all the different schools from elementary, middle school, high school. Is it any way that they could build some type of teachers alliance outside of the teachers union? That can somehow unify them in their issues that they wanna get done? Because obviously the union structure is, is, is not for them unless you on the inside.
I'm, I'm gonna lose it, I'm gonna lose a possible endorsement right now. Because what I'm gonna say is, I, I want, I would love for them to create their own situation. But let's, let's lose the union endorsement right now. You shouldn't have to when you pay the union six hundred dollars a year for the representation. You shouldn't, you shouldn't have to worry about if, if somebody's retaliating against you in a school. When you're paying the union six hundred dollars a year to make sure that you don't get retaliated against. But when you figure out, he go, he go to endorsement. When you figure out that the union is in bed with the school district. And all they care about is the numbers in the membership so that they can keep making money. Then you'll understand. In the perfect world, just like in the African-American world, yes, we should start our own party politically. In the teacher world, they should start their own union.
Our black slate.
But I'm gonna say this here, as long as you paying them six hundred dollars, Mr. Capo, Rita Thomas. You supposed to give them what they paid for. They should have voted Larry McKenzie, they should have voted the other young lady, Mark Kersey, and all them people that ran in the union. They should have voted them in. You need people that clearly understand what you are going through on a daily basis. You see what I'm saying? I would challenge self and that union to explain to these teachers. Why you continuously take their money, but yet don't give them representation. And here's the thing. Well, Monroe, what you talking about? You don't know, we represent our teachers not according to twenty-four hours ago when I got a call for one. And y'all ain't answered a call in the last six days. But yet you took her money. No, they need to get together as a collective unit. And go over there to that building whether it's burnt down or not, and demand that these people represent them to the fullest.
Sure. That answers my question. So teachers, you know what to go do.
If not, just call me, I get it done.
For sure. Look, look, I wanna build a strategic teachers alliance, you know what I'm saying? Yeah, he, he running, so he can't do that, but I can do that, so you know. They have to come holler at me. So. What are some suggestions you would give to the normal person of just getting involved, whether they have kids? No kids, kids in these systems and just wanna see change? How could they help in this system? How could they help you? How could they help their community see change in these issues?
Being a more involved parent, be, you don't have to have a kid in the school system to have a voice. You're a taxpayer. You have a voice. They take your money every year just like they take a parent's money. You have to become more involved in the system. You have to master the system. You have to understand what's going on. And the biggest thing, show up to the board meetings. This is where the foolery goes on in. Come to the board meetings, become more engaged. Have, cause she is approachable. Approach your superintendent. It's, you know, tell her your concerns about what's going on with your child in this school district. And I will say that unlike a lot of other superintendents, this one actually knows children by name. She knows a lot of children by name. Approach your superintendent, but put that pressure on your board member. To do their job. And if they don't do their job, then we must hold them accountable. And the best way to hold them accountable is in the voting booth.
For sure, for sure. So I think a lot of people don't know the power that they can exercise dealing with a lot of these. Uh, school board officials, how does it work? What is the system? Who controls the power, um, of their schools? So if, uh, what would be your normal, uh, suggestion if somebody has a issue with the school? Uh, with their kids and as maybe a particular principal, is there some tips that you can give them as far as dealing with issues and getting it? Getting it solved.
Well, first of all, become more involved at the school level with your child. Go and volunteer. That's the first thing. Become a VIP's volunteer. Volunteer in public schools. Become a volunteer. Join the S D M C committee at your child's school, your shared decision-making committee that's supposed to meet once a month. You go in there, you have a hand in what, what, what goes on into the school. Now, if you have an actual problem, I recommend you start at the school level. You try to solve it at the school level. Now, I know when you go in, if the problem is major. You, you may have a hard time containing yourself. And so we gonna kill the myth right now. That when Monroe shows up at a school, he's aggravated, but no, I'm not. I need to speak to the principal in charge. Well, we're gonna get you a vice principal. No, ma'am, I need the principal. I need to speak to the, the head person in charge. You go in there, you try to solve the issue. If it's not solvable. To, then you go to the district and you file a grievance. This is key. When I first went to the district, I walked, you ma- you remember, you know how the district is made? I walked to the, to the desk. They said, Mr. Monroe, to solve that problem, make a right, go down to the end, last door on your right. Straight up line. That's the parent center, where nobody with no power to fix nothing works in there. So if you go into the district, you stand at the desk, you sign in, make a left. Go all the way down to the last door on the right, which is employee relations. You go in there, I wanna file a grievance. When you file a grievance, that's when you're gonna get some movement. From the time you sign that paper, they got ten days, ten calendar days, not ten working days, ten calendar days. To solve your issue at a level one. If they don't solve it at a level one, nine, nine times out of ten, they'll call you. Uh, well, we finally scheduled you, uh, your level one hearing twenty days after you filed it. Well, ma'am, I tell you what, according to the policy, I'm gonna exercise my right to go straight to a level two. Now you go to a level two. You're in a, you're in a hearing, they're gonna have a level two, cause you gotta have a court reporter in a level two. They gotta bring their attorneys to the level two. So if you don't like the decision at either the first or the second level, if you have both hearings. You have the option to say, I wanna go to the next level. So if you had a level two and you don't like the decision that was made in regards to your problem. You go to a level three. Now you in front of the school board.
That's some valuable information. I ain't even know that. It, it seems simple enough, just gotta stay on it, look like. So I mean, I, I just think a lot of people don't know these different steps, even when it.
And what I would tell a parent, and this is the amazing part. Try to get to that level three if you can solve it. Because then you're going to figure out, and I hate to say it. That even though you sitting in, in the room with the, with the trustees and now you got the, the board attorney, El Nita Hutchins Taylor and, and. Katasha Woods and all these people. You might be the smartest person in the room. You just might be the smartest person in the room. Because now all you have to do is make it make sense to the nine trustees. That's all you have to do. And I've been in those level threes several times, and I always walk out smiling, cause I'm gonna make it make sense.
So, coming back to just dealing with. School board and, and your job description as being school board trustee. Is it anything that you feel like, uh, you would be able to, you would do different? Just right off the bat that, that would be able to exercise your power in the district that you would be serving?
We, 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 we have to get, for me to walk into a room full of people. Which in that room, you'd have African-Americans, you'd have Asians represented, you'd have Latinos represented, Caucasians. Let's get the racial stuff out the room. That's the first thing, let's get that out the room. If we in here to serve kids, then we have to serve every single one of them. You have to serve all two hundred and eleven thousand of them. So any decision that we make, let's stop making them along racial lines. Let, 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 let's get the race out the building. Now, now what that means is me just having a conversation with you. You being a different ethnicity. I would love to see you, when you do a commercial for your campaign run. Instead of just having Latino children on the commercial, can we have some white children, some African-American children? Can we have some Muslim children? You, you, are you thinking about what you're doing, the image that you're projecting? Let's get the race out the room. That is killing this school district. You know, for me, I could bring continuity to, to that school, to that, to that trustee position. You see what I'm saying? For me, you gonna bring no nonsense in there. You gonna bring somebody in there that's passionate about education. And that's what we lack. Because a lot of people making the decisions about education are not passionate about education.
So what if, if you had the change requirement that it takes to be on the school board trustee, is anything that you would change? Or the, the, to say preserve those seats being for people that are passionate about?
Yes, yes. I mean, it's an unwritten rule, but I would. But the unwritten one is, is, is key. Stop having your political partner that's sitting way up high, putting you in races and putting you in my school district to be a trustee. When you don't know what the hell you doing. That's the first thing. You see what I'm saying? One of the main things that I would change would be the requirement to get something put on the actual agenda. The president can put something on the agenda, but in order for something else to be put on the agenda, say, I got an issue. I gotta get two other trustees to ride with me for us to get it on the agenda. I, I, I think that rule needs to change. I think that needs to change. Also, another rule that needs to change, and it would help trustees giving parents a voice. Because I call these the Monroe rules. That, you know, the Jordan rules was in the NBA and H I S D, we got the Monroe rules. I done been all over the country, even during the pandemic, Lafayette, Louisiana, Cleveland, Ohio, Minnesota. But the Houston Independent School District is the only place I go where you only have two minutes to speak. As a parent. When I go to, to city hall meetings, city council, I get three minutes. When I'm at the school board meeting in a small city in Opelousas, Louisiana, I get five minutes. Why did they stifle our voice? Oh, them Monroe rules. Cause I would speak to every single agenda item. You see what I'm saying? You have to give the voice back to the parents. And you have to be able to sit up there and, and, and be able to. Listen to them to be able to help try to solve some of the issues that you can possibly solve. I think one thing that needs to change at the state level is. Someone needs to go lobby to change the law that says school board members cannot answer a question. From a parent in a board meeting. They don't do that in Louisiana, they answer your questions. But in Texas, they're not obligated to answer you. And they're also not obligated to do anything about what you're talking about. So that needs to change.
So you said something else that was interesting to me. We'll go back to needing two other people to. Put one of your items on the agenda. Now, we know people don't have no problem stonewalling. We know. You done been up there for raising a lot of these folks already. How you gonna get two people to get on with anything that you talking about?
Contrary to popular opinion, my brother, for people that think I cannot have a sit down with these people. And, and make things happen, I've sat down quietly with Sue Daggard. I sat down quietly and I hop on, off of forty-five with Judith Cruz. So this thing where we can't come to a common agreement on what's best for the students in the Houston Independent School District. Because they're not gonna work with Gary Monroe because he has held them accountable is a flat out lie. They know how to call my phone at two, three o'clock in the morning. Am I lying? Begging me, how you solve this and how you solve that? You know, if you ain't my friend in public, you ain't gonna be my friend in private. I give them enough information on how to do things. So bottom line is, yeah, we can figure it out. If it's in the best interest of children. It should be easy to figure out. And we should figure out a way to work together. Can I work with someone that I feel is racist? Yes, I can for one reason. As long as I know where I stand with you, we can get it done. We can get it done. Let's take our personal feelings and put them outside the door before we walk in. Now, once we walk in, let's get down to the business of taking care of these kids. So whether you're racist or not doesn't matter to me, as long as we vote and make it better for these children in this school district.
And I don't wanna, I don't wanna dig too much into your.
Come on with it.
Like that. No, no, just on some, on, on some surface level. But let's just say we do get some pushback on. What is some, what are some strategies or ways that we can put heat on people? For practical things that we know need to get done, that may just be politically held up.
John Lewis say, start good truck. Take it to the streets. Take it to the community. They don't expect African-American parents to show up at a school board meeting and raise no L. Cause normally it's me, Larry, and about three more people in there raising L. It's time for five thousand of us to show up. Give you an example. Two weeks ago, they sent out a memo saying that they were killing all middle school sports in the Houston Independent School District. They were gonna kill it because of the pandemic. I can only imagine how many emails they got, how many phone calls they got. But in less than twenty-four hours, that went out the window. So no, you wanna get some change done, you get your community busy, you make their voices as loud as you need to make them. But here's the thing, as a politician and a representative of the community, if, if, if I'm lucky enough to do that. Then I ain't gonna just sit up there when you protesting and picketing. Put the, put, put down the little thing, cut the computer off, I'm going out there with my people. I'm going staying with my people, cause if it ain't right for them, it ain't right for me.
Well, just let y'all know, dude, this is a fundraiser online, so you can go to the Cash App, uh, dollar sign Jerry Monroe. Um, definitely donate to the cause and what we trying to do and accomplish for education. If you like what you hearing here today. Um, definitely make sure that you donate and give to the cause. Um, but yeah, no, I mean, one thing that we wanna make sure that we, that I like what I'm hearing is just the, the passion for. What we need to do and, you know, right is right, wrong is wrong, especially when it comes to the education. So, you know, I don't have too many more questions here, but I would say. Leave the, leave the audience with something that you feel like that they need to have to go forward with. That can activate them either to action or thinking about something different to make them care about more about, uh, education if this is something that they passionate about.
I, I tell you what I'm worried about some. And it bothers me. Because as big as my voice is, as, as much as I move to certain mountains. What happens if I actually win? Who takes my place? Who becomes the voice of the people? Because I can't do it if I sit up there. I have to advocate from a different level. So who's gonna step up to the plate? That's my biggest concern. You know, um, I would tell people, it's, it's simple. When I sent over the information to put on my push cards, what my platform would be. What I did is I went back to my old push card from four years ago. I took all the information off of that push card and I put on the new push card for this year. Why? Because there's nothing on the old one that they ever fixed. It's the same issues now that it was four years ago. How long are we gonna keep playing this game? I want people to understand that if we don't fix education in the city of Houston, because you need a catastrophic event to happen. They're gonna go after your black schools. Now, do you want somebody weak? Sitting on the school board if they come after them? Or do you want a bona fide five-star general that's ready to go to war for any school? Now, I will tell people this here, I got teachers in here. Now, I will tell people this here, I got teachers in here. That because of the pandemic and because of the drop in enrollment of about eleven thousand kids. And a deficit of about eighty to ninety million dollars, they're gonna have to close some schools. So you want me to sit here and tell you that they not gonna close a black school? I'm gonna tell you, that's a lie they are. But the only way I'm gonna vote for that, you're gonna close a black one, a white one, a Latino, and a specialty school. You will not close all African American schools. They are no better than us. They and and the last thing, and 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 I may get a little pushback, but it's cool. African American kids have been put on the back burner in education across the country, but I'm focused on H I S D. I look at the way trustees vote, I look at their social media with the things that they say, how they post certain things. So if anybody thinks that African American kids will not be the focal point of Gary W. Monroe, you got me totally messed up. It is time for our babies to get what our ancestors fought for. What my man said, by any means necessary. You see what I'm saying? Brown versus the Board of Education has not been honored since Third Good Marshall came out of the courtroom. It is time for it to be honored. It is time for it to be honored. And I tell anybody, if the vote comes across my desk. Mister Monroe, would you close magnet schools in a heartbeat? Why? Because magnet schools were created to circumvent Brown versus the Board of Education. They were created to create segregation again. So how are you gonna educate an African American kid? With twenty-first century learning when you right now are still under Jim Crow laws? You know that, huh? School choice was created to circumvent Brown versus the Board of Education. Educate them all the same or don't educate them at all. And if you don't wanna educate them at all. Then just give us black schools so we can go on and do what we need to do. I know that is a hard pill to swallow for some people. It's 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 hard hearing the truth. But it is what it is. You give us a magnet school, but you don't fund it right. It doesn't work like that. But you give them a magnet school, they got everything they need in it. Let's tell the truth. Shame the devil. African American kids will not be the third, fourth in line. They'll be the first priority because they are the least and the less of everything.
And I say this, you see, you know, your 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 fear of somebody taking your place, I think that's one thing that we haven't done as a community and that's. Getting the next generation ready. And I say this about the the N A C Ps of the organization of the world, we don't do a good enough job in preparing. The next generation to take our place.
Okay.
We're too heavily on passing it down to who we feel is necessary, who we feel that's gonna keep doing the things that we doing instead of. Bringing it to the next level.
Well, let me tell you this, this is my plan. I'm an old man.
We need, we need, you be working on your place right now.
No, because from the day that I go in, it's gonna be some nineteen, twenty-year-old youngster. That I'm a mentor from day one. And the deal gonna be if that's you. If I'm lucky enough to get two terms, that's it. I'm gonna prep you. I'm gonna get you ready, because I'm only doing two terms, dawg. And then after that, go take your rightful place. You see what I'm saying? You you groom them. You groom them. That's what's wrong with our whole political structure. We're not grooming the next set of politicians. You see what I'm saying? And now, we're just stuck with who they wanna roll in now. You look at who they enrolled in the Houston Independent School District in the last eight years. They care about their education, right? Well, some of them rolled straight out of the H I S D, straight over to A C C. Well, what's the problem? You done messed this up, so now you finna go over there and mess that up. But then they roll their partners in to take their places and they don't know nothing. So I think we have to groom them and get them ready, bro. If you don't mind, I I take a couple of questions from somebody out there. Anybody got any questions? I don't care what it is. Not a subject you could ask me that I ain't touch.
I have one. Um my focus is mostly on trade schools because I believe that, well, not trade school, but trade programs in high schools. Because I feel like a lot of our kids graduate school and they aren't prepared for real world. Let's be honest, colleges are for everybody. But we all know that bills are for everybody, so everybody has to have a way to make money. So I'll say when I was in high school at Worthing High School, we had minimum trade programs that they left towards my senior year.
I'm I'm a Yates line, I can tell you at Worthing you had that print program, that print shop program. That not only you were printing for the school, you were printing for the community.
And we need, I wanna know what's your aim to get those back? Because I I feel like we focus too much on pushing kids to go to college, instead of pushing them just to be productive citizens and contribute to society. Because I mean, if you don't go to college, then what are you left to do? So we prepare them out of high school and we get them ready, we have less drugs, we have less violence. And we'll have less riffraff because we'll have kids that are engaged productively. So is there a way that we can get that?
Well, first thing you gotta do is you gotta get two entities out of the local school district's business. Because they in bed with them. Get the city of Houston out of the local school business, business, business. And get the local community college out of their business too. Who benefited more from you taking trade programs out of the high schools? Than the Houston Community College? You gotta get them out of bed with them. You see what I'm saying? But then you have to do what we did over at Yates. You gotta force the issue. You gotta figure out what these kids want. You know, I just ran into one of my kids at the airport yesterday. Rapper, hottest, one of the hottest in the city, say, coach, I'm, and he still called me coach because I coached him in youth football. Uh I say, did you go to the lawyer I told you to go to? That was five years ago. Yeah, I got the lawyer you told me to go to and all that. So he's doing what he wanted to do, but he honed his craft in the communications program when he was at Yates. You have to have programs in the school that that kids wanna do. I'm trying to figure out, maybe you can, you you own a beauty supply. Why is there no cosmetology in African American high schools? That makes no sense. All all of that, because you want them, because the the community college got in bed with the school district. Now, you gotta come out of school, go get a student loan, to go get the same trade and certificate. That you could have gotten when it was in the high school. North North Forest had a full-fledged, they have a full-fledged auto mechanics program. Everything you wanna learn about it. But for two years, there wasn't a certified teacher in the classroom. That's crazy. When we talked about certified teachers earlier, that is a concern for me also. That we have all these substitute teachers teaching these certified classes. And they acting like, oh, we're fully staffed. Yeah, you are fully staffed with a bunch of substitute teachers. And if parents would push the issues, if your child is receiving uncertified education for thirty plus more days. They can opt out of the start test, they can go to any school they wanna go to at that point. Because you are forcing this child to get uncertified education.
Not to mention every ten days that they're being taught by an uncertified teacher, you're supposed to be notified.
Now, you gotta get them, get them out of bed with them. That's the first component. The second one, go to Sterling High School and see where they got some empty classrooms. Okay, if they got empty classrooms, what do we gotta do to turn this into home ec, not home economics, but culinary arts? You see what I'm saying? All the high-powered vocational programs are in H I S D. They're just not in African American schools. Why why not home economics? I mean, I had home economics, it's culinary arts. But that taught me enough to become an offshore catering manager for twelve years. You see what I'm saying? You gotta get them out of bed and then you force the issue by making them put them programs back into their schools. Now, when you do that, then we ain't gotta worry about is is the hottest football player gonna come back to Sterling. Because you gonna get kids coming to Sterling if they got welded just to take welding, just to take auto mechanics. You see what I'm saying? You're right, every kid is not gonna go to college. And I'll tell you this here, because it's crazy. I'm sitting mentoring some kids in a classroom, Mister Monroe, why we gotta listen to you? You didn't finish college? You sure right, I didn't. What 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 I do at fifty years old? When figured out what a facel was. And signed up for college. To show them, you don't have to go, but don't challenge me, dawg. Because I went back, and I will say I graduated with honors. Ain't never made the, made, made the honor roll in high school, but I graduated with honors in this first rip to college, so you know. It is, it can be daunting, but it's gonna take a lot of work. And from an African American standpoint, I will tell you this, brother, to close out your question. Everything we had to get in our life, in our time, we either had to fight for it or we had to die for it. I'm not telling you to die for auto mechanics, but I'd be damned if I'm not telling you to fight for it.
Um one thing that I've also noticed too is uh is the history curriculum that we have in. Not just Texas and Houston, but in the United States, we don't talk about, we don't include black history and American history. And that's a problem. We we put it down to just one month out of the year and we put it down to just, you know, twenty-eight days. And I feel like personally, we should get rid of black history and black history should be counted as American history because we contribute, if not more, to this country. And I feel like a lot of kids don't feel important or feel like they are part of the American dream because we don't know what we've contributed to it. And I feel like if we change that through elementary, middle school, and high school, and we taught our kids exactly the contribution, let's go with the light bulb. We talked about Thomas Edison, invented the light bulb, we don't talk about the flint inside the light bulb. Why not? That's a problem. So if we don't talk about the contributions, because we can empower our kids out there and say, hey, do this, but if they don't see it and they don't see it through history. That's a problem. We have to show our kids from day one, we've done more for this country. Christmas addicts, first black man to die for this country, go to war. That's our history and that should be taught. And it should be put out there with everybody else. I'm not saying put any other history to the back, but make ours ass equal. And I don't know if that's something that you guys can do or push.
Well, that's something we've been fighting for, which is African American history, Pan-African history. I I just stood toe-to-toe with him. In in the boardroom fighting for that. But the way that you 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 set a kid up for failure. Is the first thing you do is you don't teach him about his history. My concern would be is if they rolled African American history into high schools across the country. Is I don't feel that a white person should write the book. Oh, I'd have made some of y'all mad. You can't write about black history unless you've been black. Because you ain't gonna tell the truth. They ain't gonna tell you about the flint. They ain't gonna tell you about, like, my Latino brothers who get attitudes, you know, and don't wanna stand with us some days. And I'm 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 fighting for your kids. But you don't understand, before I could speak of Third Good Marshall, I would have to speak of Mendez versus Ecuador County. That's the, that's the brief that Third Good watched, that he studied before he did what he did. They gave the Latino brothers and sisters, they're gonna teach them their history. They don't wanna teach us our history, let's just be honest. There's a, there's a fear factor in there. And I'm gonna tell you what that fear factor is. You don't want anything that can wake up this generation of black folk. Because if these youngsters figure out all the tricks and deception that you done dealt with, that they dealing with right now. They're gonna realize America's dream. I mean their worst nightmare. Do you know what that is? America's worst nightmare is when them youngsters in the street take them guns off each other, turn on them. But if you expose their history to them, and then they understand what you're doing to them and what you've done to them. I'm I'm on Cullen Boulevard, look what you've done to us. For the last fifty years, look what you've done to us. Imagine if a youngster wakes up after reading real black history and he feels the way that I feel. Can he handle it like me? No, they might handle it totally wrong. So they don't wanna teach you something that's gonna help you get ahead. Imagine if we had four million youngsters. At at nine, ten, eleven, twelve years old screaming about reparations right now. We might just get it. But they don't want you to know. And the scary part is, the people that have to get this done. You can't keep blaming that on the white brothers and sisters. It's some of you black politicians. That could get this done, that don't want this done. We need to learn our history. And you know what? If we could learn our history, that might help race relations. Because right now, there are a lot of people mad. At Africans, well, they're they're mad at white folks for enslaving us. Well, teach them their history. You not only do you need to be mad at them, be mad at them black ones, them 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 kings in them in in them colonies over there. In them, in them communities in Africa that sold us to them people.
But also teach our pardon and also, because we were not just slaves, we were also slave masters also. We were also, let's let's talk.
That's why I'm saying, if you gonna teach it, you gotta teach it all. So we got some good that they need to learn. And they got some bad that we need to learn. They 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 ain't gonna teach you, they'll tell you about the Martin. That got beat up on the William Pettis Bridge. But they won't tell you about the Martin one week before he died, how he was finna flip it. How he was finna hang out with the dude with the bean pies. They don't wanna tell you about him because they hated his guts at the end. If you gonna tell it to us, then tell us our history. But we'll keep, we still fighting that battle. I know I standing next to him, we fighting that battle.
And I can appreciate your question when it comes to that, but this, my issue with a lot of things that we talking about, we think that a lot of stuff is gonna be given to us just because we go at it politically. Like, this stuff don't happen unless we out here seeking for the power for ourselves and organizing. And again, that goes for everybody that's out here. We can't continue to not do it, not organize and think that this stuff is gonna happen for us. You know what I'm saying? We gotta make sure that everybody should be working towards a a a mission with a group. Because this don't, because I guess what, don't no one white person have power in his own self. It only, you, that person only has power through within the group. And so they can have minor, minor spats between each other. But at the end of the day, they will collectively get together to go against us. So we just have to understand when we come to it that, you know, it's a bigger goal and what we need to go at, and but we just gotta be diligent in doing.
I think one thing that the 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 whole school system could could get together and work on is is a foundation we started, but it's the idea. Don't worry about the foundation. It's the idea. We need to work on repairing the black family. We need to work on getting the African American male back into the household. So that he can be a part of his child's life in the educational process. We need to develop programs where if you, you can't understand why this kid keeps skipping school and he not getting it. That's because his mama doesn't value a diploma because she doesn't have one. Why don't we create a program to help parents get GED?
High school fathers, that's one that goes unnoticed. We talk about high school mothers, but we don't talk about high school fathers.
Exactly. So the the thing is, is there's a lot that we can do. And from a trustee standpoint, I could work with my foundation on something like that. Because we need to repair the black family. We're not gonna fix education. We're not gonna fix crime. We're not gonna fix poverty. We're not gonna fix the the economic gap until we fix the black family. It's not gonna happen. It's a fabrication and all we're doing is wasting time. You can't fix police relation just because George Floyd had a knee on his neck for eight minutes and forty-six seconds. It's gonna take somebody to step on some toes to get it done. Because if you could get it done, then Brianna wouldn't have died. It'd never happen. The seventy-four other people that have died since George wouldn't have died. So, yeah, we got some work to do. But we gotta start at the school level, because you know why? Teachers, you tell me, Mister Provost out there, you tell me, they identify our babies as early as the third grade for prison beds. This is why they don't teach them to read. My focus would be on literacy. I need my babies reading at the highest level. You remember back in the day, I don't know if you did it. But I know Larry, you remember the Howard test of basic skills, when we were in school. They would tell you what level, grade level you wanted. When I was in the third grade, I was reading on a twelfth grade level. In math, I'm on a tenth grade level in the third grade. So if we gonna waste money on state mandated tests, why don't we find something that can re-engage our children? If you can do that much, then guess what you do? You put the power back into the hands of the teachers. So that they can teach and do what they love to do. Educate the kids. And now they can go on to college and do what they do if that's what they choose. Because you know, in college, they don't ask you for a start test score. You only ask for SAT and ACT. So all this stuff is just about making money. So you know, that that's my thing, man. Repair the black family and we can repair black education. Yes, ma'am.
Um, well, I used to work at H I S D, at the G S P office at the Bush Corn, but um I noticed that some of the schools did not have nurses. And so for me, that was an issue because I'm like, what if it's a medical emergency? You gotta wait for somebody to come from this school to that school. So is there a way like the school board could possibly get a nurse at every school?
I, I think, I think your concern is, it's not just nurses. We'll start with nurses. H I S D is top-heavy. They got too many big dogs at the top making too much money. You know what I'm saying? You got all these, let's get rid of the S S O. Let's get, let's just get rid of the school support officers. You'd save millions of dollars right there. You don't need a school support officer. What, somebody tell me, what does a school support officer do?
Make money?
They make money. You see what I'm saying? You don't need all these extra superintendents and this and that. No, 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 no. You need a nurse on every single campus. Another thing that y'all didn't know about is they want to get rid of the police on our school campuses. I get justice reform, but you know what? Let me tell you something. A few, a couple of years ago, I told them in H I S D, if you don't fix this problem on these campuses, one of these kids are gonna die on one of these campuses. Last year, what happened? What happened? So now you wanna take the police officers off the campuses. So now we gotta tell the truth again, right? You wanna take the police off the campus the same way you took the discipline out the schools? You took discipline out the schools because you didn't want the black teacher whooping the white child. Now you wanna take the police off the campuses because you don't want the black cop dealing with your white child. Well, I'm sorry to tell you, you're gonna continue to have shootings on your white campuses in big cities, rural cities. We don't worry about shootings in the black schools. You know why? Cuz if you dumbing up to pull out a gun, they dumbing up to pull out theirs too. It's thirty-four guns on the school campus. So if you take them cops off our campuses, you're gonna endanger the lives of the students. You're gonna endanger the lives of the teachers, the administrators. So I am not for taking my cops off my campuses. I want justice reform in general, defund the police. Well, what neighborhood you think they gonna do it in?
Well, I would say this, I would say this, not, I'm not with the, let's just say, I think the cops for safe, need to stay there. But I would say what needs to stop is the, is the, I would say the penalization of kids in the court system because of what happens in the school.
You, do you know how hard, and I'm gonna be honest with you.
They shouldn't be able to use school suspensions to put you in jail.
But we having a good conversation. But guess what? Let's just be honest, they're using school suspension to put kid, black kids in jail at white schools. Show me a black principal sending them kids to jail for school suspension. It ain't happening on our campuses. Because our black people that run our campuses clearly understand our children. They understand the dynamics, they understand the baggage that they walk through the front door with every morning. Them kids walking through the front door, no clean clothes on some of them. They walking through the front door, when they go get in there, they don't know if their mama gonna be at home when they get home or not. So our black people are not realistically doing this on the black campuses. But from sending kids to jail, this is what I was gonna make you laugh with. Man, do you realistically know how hard it is to go to jail on an H I S D school campus? If they catch a kid with a bag of weed, I had a principal tell me, Monroe, we gotta send him to a diversion program. I say, but what the hell we running here? A school or rehab? You don't just go to jail like that on no school campuses no more. And if, and, and remember, half the campus is labeled special ed. You ain't finna send no special ed kid to jail like that. That don't happen. But now they just wanna get rid of the police. Now, you're not getting rid of police on our campuses. Well, I tell you what, I, I had, I had a S S O one time at Yates that had a different mentality. Well, one day, I'm gonna come and meet you, and we're gonna walk this campus together. Sure, come on. Man, that woman, they're five minutes, and hide me in the closet. Oh, you thought it was a game over here, huh? The people making those decisions have never walked a black campus. The guy, Bob Samborn, got a lot of, lot of respect for him, children at risk. He, he labeled our schools Fs and Ds and, and all this stuff here. Mr. Samborn, when the last time you been to a black campus? I'll ask this here, trustees, when the last time you been to a black campus? Well, I know you wasn't at Worthen when they got out of IR, IR after six or seven years. I know you wasn't at Cashmere celebrating the black students over there when they got out of IR after ten years. When is the last time you walked a black campus? Well, Mr. Monroe, when the last time you walked? When I went to give free tickets to the Teacher of the Year at West Bear, to, to the Texas game? Oh, I walked my campuses. I'm very familiar with District Nine. I, I wasn't comfortable when you took Woodson and stopped it from being a middle school and turned it into whatever you turned it into. Yeah, I, I, I wasn't, I wasn't cool with that. I, I, I walked my campuses. It's nothing for me to, you see me coming out the office when she was there. I've not been this year because I've been too busy to come out the office at Worthen High School from a meeting to talk about gang stuff with, with, with Dr. Kalia Campbell Ron. You see what I'm saying? It, it ain't an issue for me. You know, even when Madison had Mr. Seater, a Latino, it wasn't, it wasn't, no, it wasn't a stretch to see me coming off their campus after having a discussion. But I challenged these trustees, when the last time have you walked a black campus? So before you think you can take them cops off them black campuses, why don't you go over there and visit? Unannounced, don't let them know you coming. But the only thing I can tell you, i- 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 is Gladiator School, and then you'll understand how them teachers feel in the classroom some days. So, yeah, man, I, I.
I'll tell you this, before we close out, let people know how to support you, how to, uh, find you, uh, how to see more of what you're talking about and your philosophies and what you believe in and how you wanna help the schools and other issues.
I mean, it's easy to find me on Facebook, but I need your help. I need, I, I gotta raise, last time I raised nine hundred dollars. I made my opponent spend sixty thousand, but I raised nine hundred. We need more than nine hundred dollars. I'm not asking you to donate me five hundred. I'm saying if you got a dollar, send it to the cash app. We have an account, when you send it to the cash app, make sure you leave a note on that so I'll know your name. I'm gonna put, if you send me one dollar, I'm gonna put you on my campaign finance report. Your money will not be used for me. When, when my campaign treasurer walked in today, handed me some money, I gave it back. I don't deal with money. You deal with money. I don't want no parts of it. So I appreciate the people that have donated money already. Yesterday, folks sent money, we're gonna use it for the right things. You see what I'm saying? This ain't finna be a campaign where I don't get to know the voters. Our goal is to get out and knock on every single door in District Nine. We gonna hit these doors, and we gonna have these conversations. And I need you to understand that if black education is attacked in the African American community, your crime rate is going to go up. So tell me, is it the pandemic? Or is it the fact that a lot of your kids ain't in school right now? Or did you not know that certified killers walk the hallways of schools from eight to three o'clock every day? And if you got them sitting at home playing on a laptop.
They bored.
They bored.
They bored, that's right.
I agree, we gotta get them back in school, but that's one thing I didn't touch on. Well, Mr. Trustee, how do you feel about kids going to school during the pand, during the pandemic? I'll tell you what, if we cannot, yeah, if we can't have a school board meeting, then I don't believe them kids should be on them campuses. If you can't put my life in danger, why would I put a kid's life in danger? I don't believe that they're safe, I don't believe that the teachers are safe, I don't believe that the people that gotta clean up these buildings are safe. You're not giving them what they need to work with. I don't believe that schools should be open at this point. But I understand that Greg Abbott, who you need to take care of, Dan Patrick, who you need to take care of, don't care about anything but money. And one thing that needs to change, you asked me, that, that the Texas Education Agency, the person in charge of it, that position should be a voting position. It should not be appointed, and more importantly, can, if you, the governor. Next time you appoint somebody, Mr. Governor, to be over schools in the state of Texas, can he at least have been a teacher? Could he at least have been an administrator? Could he at least serve more than one term on the school board in Dallas? This man does not know anything about education. And I can't understand why H I S D trustees are in bed with the devil himself right now. We have to watch the ones that govern us because in this, it's not about color, remember? So we gonna make everybody one color, plaid. Everybody that's your skinfolk ain't your kinfolk. You need somebody now that's gonna stand up for H I S D and for these teachers and these kids. Not somebody that's gonna bow down to T E A, like I see three or four of these trustees do at every single meeting.
Well, I'll tell you what, that's been a broadcast. Thank you brought here from Our Black Slate, shout out to the black store. Y'all go to ourblackslate.com, go preorder Our Black Agenda, A Guide to Black Power for getting involved. Uh, definitely go check that out. Uh, we thank you for everybody that's broadcasting here. Definitely go look up Mr. Jerry Monroe and what we're doing, raising money for the campaign. Please give, and we out, we appreciate it, get involved.